This time I'd like to call the September 2013 Haywood County Board of Education meeting to order. This time I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for our invocation, immediately followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Rogers, would you please lead us in our invocation?
Let us pray. Most kind and great heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day you've given us. We're thankful for the things that you've given us. Lord, we pray that we use the gifts that you've given us to the best of our abilities. We pray that our teachers have great success in their stu-- with the students. Lord, we pray that the students learn, they grow. Grow in our education, Lord, that we can have the best education available, that Haywood County can produce the best students, and the best produced citizens of this county and this state. Guide us and direct us, Lord, in all the decisions that we make, that we will make the best decisions and the right decisions. Through you, Lord, we can do all these things. We pray that you guide us and direct us in all that we do, and we give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Under announcements, board members, I'd like to remind you, the October 14th will be our October Board Meeting here at the Education Center at seven o'clock. We also have the North Carolina School Board Association District Meeting coming up. It'll be held at RS Central High School on Thursday, September 26th. I can't remember exactly what time it starts, do you remember? Four o'clock for the first general session and the breakouts after that. That's in Rutherford, North Carolina. If you plan on attending, please let Ms. Leanna Moody know who I was going. Don't forget the Teacher of the Year Luncheon. That's it, and we're all invited at Law Ridge Country Club on September 12th, that's this week, from 12 until 2:00. Of course, to celebrate our Teachers of the Year at all of our schools, and then the one for the county will be announced at that timeframe also. I have an announcement about a board retreat on October the 3rd. The reason there's a question mark there is I wanted discussion on what time would best suit everyone that could be there. I assume it would be after working hours, five or six o'clock, something like that, or seven?
One day is...
Thursday.
Thursday, October the 3rd. Anybody have a preference?
Six thirty.
I'll be in Raleigh.
So you won't be able to make it anyway? Okay. Six thirty? Everybody good with six thirty?
Six or six thirty, yes.
Okay. About a two-hour meeting, so six thirty. Dr. Garrett. Don't forget to support the Haywood County Schools Foundation Fifth Annual Bingo Night. It'll be held September the 21st at 6:00 PM at the Canton Armory. It's a lot of fun, and if you don't have a ticket, please see me. I've got five to sell or buy, so I'd rather sell as to buy all of them because I'm gonna be there anyway. Don't forget the Annual Bingo Night, and please help support the Haywood County Schools Foundation. The money that raised goes back into the children and our students. Are there any other announcements that need to be made? Under agenda adjustments, we have two items, I believe, that need to be added. We'll add them between item number 13 and 14, and this will be the report of the Building and Grounds Committee by Ms. Shandible. Are there any other agenda adjustments that need to be made? Okay. Now, board members, it'll be a time for us to entertain motions or discussion on the Beaver Dam District Seat Appointment. The floor is now open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think I've ever did this, because most of the time we usually do appoint the same night of the interviews. But I am requesting that we put off appointing the Beaver Dam seat until the next board meeting.
Is that a motion?
Yes. I guess, do I have to put that in a motion?
To take action, yes, sir.
Next board meeting or a call board meeting?
Let's do a call board meeting when... I just need, I've never, I've usually, there are usually somebody that's usually above everybody else, ahead and so on. But we've got three good candidates, and I don't want to make a split decision on something that's important, especially the way that we are in the financial crisis with the money crunch that we're getting from the state and federal levels. This is a real important time and appointment, I believe.
If you'll put that in the form of a motion, we get a second, we'll discuss it.
I would like to put it in a form of a motion that we hold off on appointing the Beaver Dam seat for either the regular board meeting or a call board meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a to delay the decision till the next either call board meeting or regular board meeting to delay the Beaver Dam District Seat Appointment. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we have a call board meeting and not wait till the next board meeting.
What timeframe?
Two weeks, within two weeks.
When is our next board meeting?
October 14th.
I guess if I look on this board, I could probably tell. October 14th. So, yeah, you're talking about a little over a month.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Any other discussion?
If we can do it with sooner than that, I think it would be beneficial to try to get someone in this position and start helping out, you know, the board and... So I think a sooner call meeting, if we're gonna go this way, would be better than waiting.
Okay.
From we went from two weeks to sooner board meetings, so... And I, discussion, I really, like I said, I really hate to do this, but I just...
Mr. Schmader.
Would you, do you have something to say, Mr. Schmader? You have any input here?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to reiterate what, Mr. Kirkpatrick, we have three outstanding candidates.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion before we vote?
So did we do a timeframe or we just...
We hadn't voted yet.
We gotta vote on withholding the first and then do a timeframe.
Well, the motion said until the next, till the next call board meeting or regular meeting.
So call board meeting can be anything, so...
Could it be, it could be tomorrow, it could be next week.
Can we try to do it next week, or is that gonna be too soon for you guys to make the decision?
No, next week's good. Just do next week. If we get this passed.
What is today, Tuesday? Now, give me a week, please.
Sixteen, next Monday.
Less than a week.
Mr. Marsh.
Yeah, I'd prefer next Tuesday if possible, seventeen.
Dr. Garrett, did you need to have a call meeting also?
Personnel would do, because we had those new allocated positions. So that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Would a week give you enough time?
Now I may have to walk them through instead of giving them to you the week before.
Yeah, because they'd have to be posted by Thursday. Okay.
Is that gonna give you enough time, Stephen, you think, or...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I just, it's just sometime like...
I understand, you don't want to make a decision tonight, because...
Well, like I said, we usually have, sometimes it's usually, you can always...
Usually we have a vote that night.
Right, and usually it's...
And then they swear them in at the next board meeting. Only thing I've done different this time that we, is we would be voting and swearing them in tonight, just in essence of getting that person representation on this board.
But like I said, before, before, it seems like it's always ahead.
The only thing...
I mean, up, and I just don't want to make a split decision in ever how long it's been since we had the interview.
What do you mean, a split decision?
I mean, not a split decision, I mean, a decision that...
A hurried decision.
Yeah, a hurried decision, because I just...
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, any other questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. One, two, three, four, five, what is it?
Six to one.
Six to one, excuse me, my math's not good. So we will have the appointment at the call board meeting this, October the, September the 17th. I'll do the straightening then. Is it the 16th?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
At what time? Seven times...
Seven o'clock. I'd like to thank the candidates for coming tonight. I hope you'll be able to attend on the 17th.
It's October 17th.
And so we'll make a decision at that time, okay? We do have three great candidates. And June, if you won't be able to come, we'll try to work around your schedule also, okay? Thank you so much for coming this evening. Ms. Moody, have you had anyone that would like to address the board in open session? Okay. Just go ahead and bring it up. Now is a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. And one more disclaimer, if I mispronounce your name or can't read it, I apologize. But first of all, we have, is it Deion Galki? Okay.
Three minutes is short, so...
If you have additional materials, you can leave with us for the, for the record, that'd be fine.
Thank you all for your service. We appreciate what you're doing, and just as we're talking to you, we just want to be very constructive and help the district to have every child reach their full potential. That's really our biggest goal, and we will be bothering the people in Raleigh. We're not happy with the way that they're cutting our funding either, so I want you to let you know that. All right, if you open it up, I talked this week to some people and just kind of started where we're at with our ACT scores, that's how we're being judged now, our transparency, accountability standards. Our SAT scores, we got Asheville's taking 30% more of their students took them in 2012, but we still scored 140 points below them. So we're just looking at trying to, you know, increase these scores. PISCA, where my children are a zone to go, 19% took an AP exam, which is lower than the national average, the national average pass rate is actually one out of five or 20% passes. So our goal is for every child to succeed to their full potential, and I know our vision as a county is to be the best in the world at this. And so for us as parents, what we look for as far as success is, first of all, scores, because they matter. You can't get into certain places, you can't get into certain degrees if you don't have them. They count. Graduating with a licensure from Haywood County, like Tuscaloosa has, you know, the program where kids are going to get their nursing, and 100% of them are passing, and that's great. That's the kind of thing we want to see. We want to see more students having those opportunities. If they graduate with an AP exam, not only do they get academic credit, but the studies are showing that they actually will be able to probably graduate in four years. More than half the people in the United States who go off to a four-year college do not finish in six years. So we've got to make sure that they're not just going or getting into school, but that they're actually succeeding once they're there. So that measure is really important to us as parents. When we look at our county demographics, we know our teachers, oh my gosh, they work so hard for so little, but we look at this, and they're already dealing with a lot of demographic issues that are really difficult, but the great thing about it is that education can change some of these demographics. So that's one of the things we can look at. But we, we need to look at, like, PISCA, 22%, according to the North Carolina Report Card, are taking these Huskins courses. This is a great program. We need more students doing that, or we need more students taking these AP exams. So there's a good example right there of the school my kids are supposed to go to, and it's just, where's, what are the 60% doing? That's one of the things I'd like the board to find out for our next meeting. If you could, find out what's happening to that middle 60%. Revamping our pacing, as I'm a parent of a, of a elementary school student, and I, you know, sat through a meeting today, and I was told that, you know, that the pacing is that y'all have had a policy, and you have to go at this pace. And so even if your child is already ready for the next grade level, they can't start learning it if they're ready for that. They have to wait and be differentiated and given enrichment and that kind of thing because of the pacing. Everyone goes at the same pace. But a lot of other, other things here that you can read. If you go on to the middle school, this is just suggestions, obviously this isn't everything, but when I look back at my own schooling, I had many of these opportunities. We could take Earth and Environmental Science for high school credit in middle school. We could take Foreign Language in middle school, that was for high school credit. I mean, I went to, that wasn't 25 years ago, and I know this, this school district, when we moved here, people were telling us, oh, my children knew French when they finished, and all these wonderful things, and I know programs been cut because of funding, but we can also be more creative in the way that we administer these programs. And colleges are looking at this. You can see there at the bottom that, you know, UCLA puts out on their freshman profile, how many semesters did you take of college preparatory courses since seventh grade? And that's because kids are coming through their system, and in seventh grade, they're taking Spanish I, Spanish II, because they've had it prior to this, and Spanish III and IV and ninth and 10th grade, and then they're taking the AP Spanish Lit and AP Spanish Language their senior years. And so 60% of their kids are having algebra in seventh grade, they're, they're on a different track than we are in Haywood County. So we need to look at what we're doing nationally. Take a look at Massachusetts, seventh grade is standard for that.
Your time's...
Is that my time?
Your time's...
Well, hopefully we'll get to talk outside of these three minutes, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The board recognizes what, Boss?
Naj Gausi.
Naj?
Naj Gausi, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you again for your time. I'll be quick, just to follow up on what she was talking about, one of the goals is to improve the schools, and we want to get more AP classes for the students. I have talked to several of our friends, and sometimes a student can't get an AP class, basically because it's too full. And so one of the goals is to have more AP classes and even start at ninth and 10th grade. In the brochure, she talks about human geography, 25,000 freshmen took the AP test in 2010. The majority passed with a three or higher. And we're gonna establish a training program in ninth grade. College Board recommends World History or European History in 10th grade, and you can read some of the statistics on improving the schools. And I think I'm gonna let John and Michelle follow up with some stories.
Okay. Board recognizes John Lafada.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you.
Yes, sir.
I can only compare my educational experience with, to my own children at this point in time, which is what I experienced. Now, in my seventh grade, we were tracked out already to college prep kind of curriculum versus vocational curriculum, et cetera. And I think having such a core curriculum will allow us to have the students take the courses they need at the rate they need. I know once you get to high school and you're, and you're start trying to get these AP courses and honor courses, and they overlap with other courses that you would like to take, for instance, band, some courses are, you just cannot get. My own son could not get chemistry until he was in 11th grade, and that's not appropriate. I think some, I'd like to see some kind of movement where we develop a core curriculum for these gifted students where they can be challenged. These are more labor-intensive and more hard courses for these students, but I think they can take it. I think they can do the work, and that's, I would like to see that kind of movement. The perception of teaching for tests, I think, is rampant, and it's, it's a kind of a problem at our level. I think both the federal and state regulations buying what you have to teach, but I think on the same time, that's a minimum, and I think that we can build on that standard and go above that. And again, I think developing some kind of core course for college, students who desire college, even in the middle school, I think, is, is what needs to happen at this point in time, where we are and how Ms. Gausi noted that, you know, these core curriculum courses start in the seventh and eighth grade and other places. And it's, it's to bring us up to par and exceed what we can do for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Michelle Gross, Grossy, is that right?
It's Gross.
Gross, I'm sorry.
I'm at a different point in my children's educational career. I have a child in high school, and I've had two graduate from Tuscaloosa. My daughter is a sophomore in college now. When she was entering the 10th grade, she wanted to take AP English because she wanted to major in English. She didn't get in. Because I'm the kind of mom I am, I called, and I was told, oh, well, you know, she's in good company. About 10 other kids didn't get in. Now, these are kids that applied and apparently had the grades, and they didn't get in because there was one class. Now, why would, why is, why can't you just make the class bigger? That's because these AP classes require an enormous amount of writing if they're taught well. They're to prep kids for college, and, and they have to be taught well, or we may as well not do it. So it turned out Lydia didn't get in because of a clerical error. Two pieces of paper got stuck together, and so they had to put one more person in the class, and she got in. And here's the deal, Lydia is exactly where she wants to be right now, but there are 10 other kids, you know, who didn't get in. I don't know where those 10 kids are, because they didn't have a bulldog mom, you know? And that's not right, because then we're probably penalizing single parents and kids who have free lunch, and kids who don't have the advantages that my kids have. Right now, I have a daughter who's in the 10th grade, and she's in Turning Points, which is a feeder course for AP American History in the 11th grade. The class is huge. They don't have textbooks. They have one set of classroom textbooks that don't start until 17-something, and those are Florida discards. Now, I know money is tight. I know that, that we just aren't getting what we need, but we're gonna have to come up with some way to creatively finance our kids' education. We cannot write off this county, and half the counties in the state are doing better. We gotta figure out what they're doing. We have got to find a way to, to solve this problem. My kids are going to have all the opportunities that they need, but you shouldn't have to be the child of a doctor or a lawyer in order to get what you need in Haywood County, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ms. Amy Wilson.
I don't really like microphones. I've got a number of kids, I've got four children, all in the public school system here in Haywood County, and I, I really just want to reiterate what these folks have already said. These conversations are happening with parents all over the county, constantly, on the soccer field, at school, all the time, of really wanting to make sure our kids get what they need. A couple of examples, I have one child who really needed to be challenged more than he was in, in his middle school experience, and I really went and asked for him to be able to take a, you know, an earlier math class, and it, and everyone is so supportive. Teachers are wonderful, but it's something about the structure that doesn't allow kids to be challenged earlier that we might need to take a look at. Another example I have is just of having a kid who's taken Spanish for three years in middle school, but then is now in Spanish 101 again in high school. And there's got to be a way for us to push kids forward and allow them to really reach their full potential. It's not about my kid, it's about all of our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all coming this evening and your comments and the information that you've left. We will look over. We will take a look at these issues individually as they've been presented to us tonight. Thank you so much for your concerns. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the August 8th, August 12th, and August 19th, closed in regular session minutes. At this time, we entertain a motion to have it be approved as presented.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Say it with Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. I've had someone approach me about being reappointed back to the Calendar Committee unless somebody has a burning desire to be on it. Mr. Francis has said that he would graciously serve on that committee again. He did a great job last time, and we look forward to seeing him back on that committee unless someone has an objection.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Francis to the, to the Calendar Committee.
Okay. Now, was I lying about you?
No.
Okay, you're willing to serve, okay.
I will on the surface.
All right. Mr. Kirkpatrick is second. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, no one's come to me and asked to be on the Employee Suggestion Committee, but is there anyone that is interested in doing so?
Sir, I made the motion that we kept that policy in place and revamped it, so stepped up. If it, if the board's okay with it, I'll take it.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Mr. Morris to the Employee Suggestion Committee.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second, by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
I abstained myself, sir. That's okay.
Mr. Morris has abstained, and motion carries unanimously with one abstention. Now, we'll recognize, the board recognizes Mr. Todd Trantham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you'll direct your attention to item number 13 on your agenda. It is a memorandum of agreement between Haywood County Schools and Macon County Schools for a funded position that we actually began utilizing two years ago, so this is a continuation of that agreement. It is a memorandum of agreement between Haywood County Schools and Macon County Schools for a funded position that we actually began utilizing two years ago, so this is a continuation of that agreement. Couple of years ago, just a short version of that, the seven districts west of us, six districts west of us and ourselves, began discussing the fact that none of us could afford the kind of engineering services that we need. We looked at our budget, that was a high expense item, when you're paying by the day for a contractor to come in and do engineering services, that gets quite expensive. And so, we came to the conclusion that it was going to be far cheaper for us if we pooled our resources together and hired that person. Macon County, two years ago, became the funding agent for that, and so, the agreement exists between this board and Macon County Public Schools, who will, who the individual works for. And funds approximately $104,000 a year, that includes his salary, all of his benefits, travel supplies, and staff development, I think, this year, but when we reviewed what was actually spent out of that, the amount that ours came to was a little bit less than 20. I think we ended up being at about 15 this year, because we looked at what was actually left over from the year before, and we were able to save some money there. So, this is the worst-case scenario, at the $20,800, that money's already put in the budget. I just need to bring that before you for your approval, that we continue that from July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2015.
I'll entertain a motion that we approve the WNC EdNet memorandum of agreement as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trantham, thank you. Board now recognizes Mr. Shepherd. For policy. I didn't hear any Amin's out of you, though.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as the policy committee chair, I have a couple of policies to bring before you tonight for their first reading. The first one's Board Policy C1, and that is just a small change to the graduation requirements policy that explains how we will take part in the North Carolina Graduation Project, that our students will take part in that, and that we'll monitor them according to the standards of quality that the state has put forth, and Dr. Garrett will certify those to the state.
Okay. Policy C1 will be tabled for 30 days, are any questions or discussion on that one at this time? Be tabled.
All right, very good. And the second one is a brand-new policy, it's going to be SA 20 if and when it is adopted, it is students with food allergies. And it is, you know, increasingly, we're seeing more and more students with problems with food allergies and allergies to all kinds of things in the atmosphere. And this is our initial response to this, it's, you know, probably been a long time coming, and we've had a lot of help on developing this with Allison Francis, you know, trying to make common sense out of it, and this is what we've come up with. It's not a complete, you know, remnants of peanuts or any other possible allergens, but it's just a common sense way to deal with these issues.
Okay. Any questions, comments about SA 20? There being none, we'll table that for 30 days for public input.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd, and thank you to the policy committee for your hard work. Now, we would have a report from the Building and Grounds Committee from Ms. Shandible.
The Building and Grounds Committee has approved and recommends to allow a Girl Scout to build a horizontal climbing wall for her gold award project at Bethel Elementary School. And the project will be built with funds that are provided by the PEP grant and from local donations.
Have that in form of a motion, then.
And I make a motion that is approved.
Okay. We have a motion from Ms. Shandible to approve a climbing wall?
A horizontal climbing wall at Bethel Elementary.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yeah, that is a transverse climbing wall, we have some of those in several of our elementary schools already, most elementary schools already have one of these.
All the elementary schools.
It's like eight-foot-high, 32-foot wall, it'd be at the end of one of the gymnasiums, and it's, you know, the kids, their feet actually never go higher than three feet. And it's an issue, it's a...
So, liability issues or...
Liability is issue, everything's under wraps, and we've got, I'm sure there's no issues to our school system, our school system. Our maintenance department will be supervising the project and making sure everything's up to the codes and parts.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
And the Building and Grounds Committee also makes a motion to allow Tracy Hargrove with maintenance to surplus up to three mobile units from Tuscola High School.
Okay, we have a second for the motion? Second, Ms. Milner, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from Building and Grounds? Thank you for the hard work of the Building and Grounds Committee and those that serve on it and those that run the meetings, thank you. Now, we have a report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Jim Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee has met earlier today and reviewed the local, or the monthly financial reports, and I'd like to commend Mr. Phillips and his department for a lot of work that they put in getting the new year started, and there was lots of reconciliations that they had to go through. And during the reports, everything looked to be in order, so at this time, I would like to bring before the board a motion to approve the regular monthly financial reports.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the regular monthly financial reports, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
Do we need to approve...
Yeah, child nutrition and...
And then add the state budget amendments.
Yeah, the state budget amendments, and also the capital budget revisions, 13 and 14.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve child nutrition budget, the state budget amendments, and also the budget revisions for capital A and D, M.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve those aforementioned reports.
Yes, yes, I think that's the ones, yes.
I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Milner, any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from Finance? I can't remember, I think I got everything. Okay, very good, thank you. Board recognizes Dr. Ann Garrett for Personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have 10 separation from employments, you have nine employment statuses, and you have three leave-of-absences. For your approval, you have 14 employments, excuse me, you have 15 employments, excuse me, you have 17 employee status changes, nine contracted services, you have 12 substitutes, you have three non-employee coaches, and you have 14 volunteer services.
At this time, we entertain a motion that Personnel be approved as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion from Mr. Rogers, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Henson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Is there any further business that needs to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman, I did hear totally revised local budget included in the budgets that you approved.
No.
Yes.
They were? Yes. Yes, sir.
Are you saying the budget, Mr. Hargrove, is that correct? We got you taken care of, Ms. Hargrove.
Thank you, sir.
In session on the 17th. Next Tuesday. Okay. Meeting adjourned.